Mr. Chair, I would move for consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $776,664.62. Manual checks in the amount of $69,321.48. Payroll and liabilities for July 20th, 2018, and July 27th, 2018, in the amount of $468,075.3. For a total of $1,314,061.13.
Okay, I guess I would second that.
Yes.
Any discussion on that?
I didn't have any questions.
Okay. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Anything that we need from you, Mr. Tolsted or Ms. Harris?
No, sir. We have nothing additional.
Okay, then we are adjourned at 6:46 PM.
13 regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7 PM. Councilmember Godey will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and after that, Councilmember Hancock will offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for the opportunity we have to meet as a city council and with the city staff here, and for the opportunity that we have to serve the city of Riverton. We ask that you please help us tonight, that we will be able to make decisions that will benefit the city generally, and also that we will have our minds enlightened and our abilities enhanced, such that we can do things that will please Thee and that will help us all to be able to have a stronger and a better city. We thank Thee for all of the many blessings we have received, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Godey.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am here.
And Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Sean Peterson. Good, thank you. I declare that we have a quorum, and the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as it's been presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Communications from the floor. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that's already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Hi, I'm Debbie Anderson, resident of Riverton, and I just have some concerns. We live here in Riverton. We live across the street from the city park, which I love the city park, but it broke my heart the other day when my son came out from Casper and they wouldn't let my granddaughter go over there and play because of the stuff that goes on at the park. She was brokenhearted, but I don't know if you all know what goes on at the park on a daily basis, but it's pretty bad. There's people over there drunk every day. They're fighting every day. They urinate openly everywhere. There's little kids there, you know. These kids are seeing this daily. Ambulances are over there daily. They get, like I said, the fights. They're knockdown dragouts. There's blood going everywhere. There's nudity. The kids are my main concern over there because it isn't a good environment for them at all. And, you know, you're putting in a splash pad, too. So, that's another concern I have, but I would just love to see a solution to this. I don't know how we can do that, but that's my main concern right now. And the problem with it being is maybe it's the accessibility to the alcohol, that they're able to get it too easily or something. And then they drink over there all morning long or all day. Two hours they're over there just drinking. They can't even walk, but yet they get in the vehicle and they drive. They're gonna kill somebody. So, that's my main concern. And thank you for the time.
Oh, you bet. Thank you. And be assured that that's a concern of ours, too.
Right.
Okay, and we attempt in every way we can to enforce the law to the fullest extent and to make every possible effort that we can. And having the skate park there has made a huge difference in the fact that it brings a lot of people into the park.
Exactly.
And we hope with the splash pad, you see that that will do the same thing, is that it will bring more and more people into the park, okay?
That's, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that is what's happening. There's a lot more people coming, but with what's going on in the park, it's not a good environment for children. It really isn't. I mean, these people are drunk, fall down drunk. They approach everybody that walks into that park, be it a kid or an adult, asking for money, asking for alcohol, drugs. I don't know, but that's a real problem.
Good, thank you.
I see it every day because I do live across the street.
Okay, thank you for your, what's your address, Debbie?
924 East Fremont.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, July 17th, 2018, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, August 7th, 2018, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for August 7th, 2018. An approval of the municipal court report for the month of July, 2018.
Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilman Hancock.
Recommendation from the finance committee for consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $199,255.43. Credit card in the amount of, wait a minute, I'm looking at the wrong one. Standby. I knew that that was the wrong one because I was like, numbers don't work. Here's the actual recommendation.
Okay.
$776,664.62. Manual checks in the amount of $69,321.48. Payroll liabilities for July 20th, 2018. July 27th, 2018, in the amount of $468,075.3. For a total of $1,314,061.13.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve consent. Any discussion further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and that passes. Public hearing in consideration of fireworks permit application for the Riverton High School. City clerk's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. The city clerk's office received a fireworks permit application for Riverton High School. It's for cannon launch at the football games. As you know, in years past, the cannon has been launched every touchdown that Riverton gets, and then at the end of the game. So, the start and finish time would be 7 to 10:30, and it would be on game days. And Mr. Griffith is in the audience, if you have any questions for him as well. And we did receive support from the fire department.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we open the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be opened. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue?
Seeing done, Your Honor, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and I now declare the public hearing to be closed. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of fireworks permit application for Riverton High School.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Thanks, Sean. 10. Public hearing in consideration of retail liquor license transfer from the Cedar Bar to First Interstate Bank. City clerk's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. The city clerk's office received an application for a transfer of ownership of a retail liquor license for the remainder of the liquor licensing term, which is through March 31st of 2019. The application was to transfer from Cedar Bar to First Interstate Bank, and the liquor license at this time will be non-operational. The application has been certified as complete by the liquor division, and all fees have been paid. Proper notice has been given to the public. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the transfer.
Okay, the chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we open a public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws, and I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue?
Seeing done, Your Honor, I'd move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. Discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes, and I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the retail liquor license transfer of ownership.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Lance?
Your Honor, I'd probably direct this to Ms. Watson. Is the Cedar Bar closing as a result of this transfer of the liquor license?
It is, yes.
Okay. Is it already closed?
It already has.
It already has?
Mm-hmm.
Is this, I'm sorry, is this typical of this type of a situation where the bank takes ownership and then, do we see that often, I guess, is maybe the question?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Not very often, at all. However, it is, the bank has legally obtained ownership of the building, and when they applied for the loan for the building, they had the liquor license included in that. So, the bank is now taking over the liquor license as well as the building.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Carl.
How long can we have a liquor license inoperative? What's the time, is there a timeframe?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
There is a timeframe. It's one year per state statutes. Unless there's unforeseen circumstances, they will grant you an extra year. The council can grant an extra year, so a total of two years.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I didn't hear you, Sean.
I said aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. 11. Take from the table ordinance number 18-008. First reading, off-street parking. Councilmember Bailey moved and seconded by Councilmember Gibbon to adopt ordinance 18-008. This is a little history for you. The motion was tabled. Chair will entertain a motion to take the ordinance off. So, does somebody want to move to take the ordinance off of the table?
Your Honor, do we, do the off-the-table and then discussion, or?
Yes, off-the-table and then discussion.
Your Honor, I guess another option I was thinking of, if we're wanting to discuss this at a work session later, would be to keep it on the table rather than taking it off at this point, I guess. I don't know if anyone had any thoughts on that.
Do you want to work on this at a work session?
I do.
That'd be fine. That'd be fine.
That was part of the reason, I think, we were discussing tabling it in the first place. We'd identified some issues we wanted to see addressed. We wanted to give some feedback, I think.
Okay, all right.
So, I'd move to have it remain on the table and consider it at a future work session, then?
I don't think we needed to.
Or do we just leave it?
Your Honor, as a point of order, once you put something on the table, it has to be reconsidered at the next meeting. So, it'd need to be removed from the table and then placed back on the table.
Okay, do it.
I move that we take ordinance number 18-008 off of the table, then.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we remove it from the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. It's off the table.
Your Honor, I move that we put ordinance 18-008 back on the table for consideration at our next work session meeting, I guess, would be the best way to go.
It'll be next Tuesday, right?
Correct.
Second.
It moved and seconded that we put it back on the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Back on the table, and we'll talk about it next week. Okay? Community development directors, all a C. We don't need that. We don't need that. We don't need that. Consideration of city equipment to be auctioned. Public Works Directors report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. City staff has identified several pieces of equipment that are either redundant or have reached their useful life. Therefore, we would like to liquidate them through public auction. Those items are listed in your packet. And staff would propose that we utilize an online auction service, govdeals.com. We have had success using them in the past. Govdeals.com does ensure that the bidders are responsible and that the listed items go for the highest bid amount. Staff does set a minimum bid amount so that we do receive close to a market value for the items. Therefore, well, and I will back up and say that city staff has estimated that if every item goes for the base bid that will be listed, the total budget impact will be $11,450. So, with that being said, staff recommends that city council liquidate the items listed in your packet through govdeals.com. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, we'd make a motion that city council approves the sale of surplus equipment through govdeal.com.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. End of the year fiscal health report. Finance Directors report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am pleased to appear before you this evening to discuss our year-end fiscal health report. Also thankful for our fantastic audience that we have this evening. I've never had this many people here. So, welcome, everybody. Okay. So, last fiscal year, the governing body of the city of Riverton approved the fiscal year budget totaling $26,256,347. The city staff has exercised sound judgment and prudent procurement practices in order to stay within the allowable budget. We have managed the budget process according to financial policies and procedures, and I'm excited to share the results of the budget with you this evening. For the benefit of our audience and our viewers, I just want to give a brief recap about municipal government budgeting and finance and accounting. The general fund is actually the primary operating account or fund for the city of Riverton, and it's used to account for the revenues and expenditures of most of the tax-supported activities of the city. For example, there are several departments within the general fund. Some examples of those would include the police department, streets and alleys, the weed and pest department, parks, community development, information technology, and building maintenance, to name a few. It also houses the mayor and council budget, city administrator, and administrative services. All of the departments of the city in the finance or the general fund are supported by the general fund, with the exception of the water, wastewater, and sanitation funds. In the fiscal year 2018, the general fund made up 46% of the city budget, and the revenue sources that support the general fund include taxes, other governmental funding, and fees collected from licenses and permits. The city also does receive a direct distribution from the state of Wyoming. It's referred to as supplemental funding, and it is derived from over-the-cap mineral royalties and appropriated through the state legislature. Those funds are largely used by the city of Riverton to fund capital projects, equipment purchases, and also to support our community service programs. Those would be programs such as the Paws Animal Shelter, the Riverton Chamber of Commerce, Riverton Recreation, injury prevention resources, and the like. The city of Riverton received $1.3 million in direct distribution funding this year, and when projecting the budget in the general fund, it was determined that we would need to transfer $107,000 for, to support our general fund operations. I know many of you remember when we went through our tedious process of going through the budget. We did budget and appropriate several transfers from cash and reserve in order to put our budget together. I'm happy to say that at the close of this budget year, we actually had a positive balance in our general fund to the amount of $48,469. Therefore, we eliminated the need to have to do a transfer from reserves to support the general fund this year. So, we're very pleased and proud of that. The next fund that I'm going to go to is the airport fund. While the airport fund is included in the general fund, the revenues and expenditures are actually tracked separately. This assists us in providing more accurate financial reporting when it comes to applying for state and federal ground funding. Generally speaking, airport capital projects are funded at 93.75% in federal funding, 3.75% in state funding, and then 2.5% in local funding. So, when you look at a large airport capital project, the city of Riverton is obligated to approximately 2.5% of total funding for some pretty major projects. The operational revenues in the airport fund are derived from ground lease rentals, aviation fuel tax, car rental income, and landing fees. So, the remaining revenues to offset the expenditures for the airport fund are generally transferred or supported by the general fund. This last year's budget cycle, we anticipated a transfer of $347,000 from the general fund to support the airport fund, and the actual amount that we did need to transfer at the end of the year was $368,035. So, it resulted in about a $20,000 shortfall. Part of the reason for why we were off was that we actually budgeted that we were going to be receiving revenues from Fremont County government for the assistance in airport operations, and that was $40,000 that they did not approve and we did not receive. So, that is partially why you will see a budgetary shortfall in the airport fund. Moving on to the water fund, again, water, wastewater, and sanitation funds are considered enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are used to account for operations that are financed and operated in a manner similar to regular business enterprises. The fees that are received from the enterprise funds are rates. The enterprise fund rates adequately generate revenue to pay for the costs of operation and maintenance, as well as establishing funds for future capital projects. And again, this is water, wastewater, and sanitation funds. The costs are primarily paid for by user charges, and the revenues actually support the funds, and they're considered self-contained. So, the total budget for the water fund was $3,496,000. The revenues actually exceeded our expected, our anticipated expenditures by $65,335. Excuse me. We budgeted a transfer of $67,000 to reserves. So, we were actually 98% of our projected numbers for our budget in the water fund this year, which is pretty fantastic. We're very pleased with that as well. So, we're short just slightly over $1,000 in our transfer for reserves to the water fund, so we came out ahead on that one. For the Waste Water Fund, the total budget was $2,826,000. Our expenses did outpace our revenues by $5,459. Again, that's not a large number when you're looking at a $2.8 million budget. We budgeted that we would realize a gain of $20,000 to transfer from reserves in this fund. However, we did arrive at a shortfall of the 25. I do attribute the shortfall in this to expenses that we paid towards the North Federal Capital Construction Project. We had expenses that we paid out in June. We did receive some reimbursements from our grants and loans, however, we did not receive those until after the close of the fiscal year. So it was just a matter of timing more than anything. So that'll do it for the Waste Water. In the Sanitation Fund, the total projected budget was $2,514,000. We close out the year with an overage in the Sanitation Fund of $142,985. Looking back into last year's budget planning, we did budget a street sweeper out of the Sanitation Fund. The projected cost for the street sweeper was $280,000. The actual purchase price was $221,730, so we saved quite a bit of money on the street sweeper. The city council also approved a transfer of cash in the amount of $49,000 to help offset the cost for the purchase of that street sweeper. So with the savings of that, we saved $58,000. It eliminated the need for a transfer from cash. Additionally, we realized a large savings in the Sanitation Fund this year in our landfill charges. We actually budgeted, well, we saved $73,000 over what we budgeted in expenses for landfill charges this last year.
So, excuse me, Mia, so we spent more on tipping fees than what we had budgeted?
We saved more. We spent less than what we had budgeted in tipping fees. The Airline Minimum Revenue Guarantee Fund, so this is the fund that we utilize to support our air service in Fremont County. We are just keeping pace with the MRG. We are receiving reimbursements from the state of Wyoming from their Air Service Enhancement Program, and those reimbursements are coming in at a rate of 60%. The reimbursements are received at month-end, so when you're looking at this slide, you see that there was a budgetary shortfall, a difference of approximately $100,000. However, we did have outstanding reimbursements of approximately $95,000 that we actually received on July 9th, so it was at the close of the fiscal year. So by the time all was said and done, we had a shortfall of approximately $5,000. I will say that I did have to do a transfer of $58,000 from the general fund to help support the shortage in the MRG for this year. I did, on behalf of the Finance Department, we definitely want to extend our thanks to the city council for your support throughout this budget year. We have appreciated your guidance and your feedback as we have worked through this process, and I know you all make your decisions in the best interest of the community. I also want to thank our city administrator, Tony Tolstet, and the leadership team and the city staff for their commitment and the hard work that they've put in to close out a successful budget for us this year. And I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mia.
You're welcome.
Any questions, anybody? I just was, I think we were quite pleased with the budget process this year, the opportunity that council had to actually participate in it at a lower level and see the work that goes into pulling the budget together. And so it was, I think it was a very positive experience for everybody on council that was able to participate and appreciate your willingness to share all the secrets.
Thank you, and we definitely appreciate your input and look forward to continued communication throughout the year.
Yeah, well, that makes it easy when it comes to city council meeting to approve the budget because we've seen the details in the background, so, thanks for all your work.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item of business is an air service memorandum of understanding. Public Works Directors, report please.
Thank you, your honor. Coming before you is an agreement that the city enters into with Fremont County and Lander. This is now the third year this agreement has come before you, and the purpose for the agreement is to receive monies to support the Minimum Revenue Guarantee for air service with Denver Air Connection. As you know, the state grants 60% of our Minimum Revenue Guarantee through the Air Service Enhancement Program. The rest of the 40% is up to the communities to come up with, and we are fortunate that Riverton, Lander, and Fremont County have all contributed funds or committed to funds for the upcoming fiscal year to the tune of approximately $150,000 each to support the Minimum Revenue Guarantee. Prior to receiving the funds from Lander and Fremont County, we want to make sure we execute this agreement. The agreement is the exact same terms as last year, we just updated the dates, and as you remember, the agreement establishes a subcommittee to FAST. The subcommittee is a revenue subcommittee, for lack of a better term, where they will review the weekly invoices we receive from Denver Air Connection and give their vote of approval before payment. And the reason we do that is so that each of the funding parties, they are involved in the expenditure process, and they have oversight over the funds that they give. Mia Harris is the city's representative and does a great job, and Fremont County and Lander designate someone to do that as well. Fremont County approved their side of this MOU this morning. Lander will consider it next week, and city staff recommends that the city council approve the MOU between Fremont County and Lander to reestablish the Minimum Revenue Guarantee Subcommittee. And I'll stand for any questions at this time.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the air service memorandum of understanding.
Your honor, I would move that we approve the air service MOU between Riverton, Lander, and Fremont County.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, discussion. No questions, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, wait a minute.
This is for Kyle. Did, I didn't get a chance to be at the meeting today for the county, well, I'm normally not, but any talk about their financial contributions to the MRG this year?
Your honor?
Go ahead.
We requested a financial contribution in April, and it was approved part of their budget process at the tune of $150,000.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kyle.
I think what he's really saying is, is they reneged on last year's deal, and are we gonna have the same happen this year?
Your honor?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I don't see any problem at all receiving funding from Fremont County. Last year, they did fund for the Minimum Revenue Guarantee contribution to the tune of $150,000. We did ask for $200,000 from them last year, and they funded us at 150. The funding that they did not support was for operations, which was a different funding request from them.
So we're okay, then, this year with the budget because of the reduction of cost to us or the, so what I'm really saying is, is we're not gonna be looking at a shortfall next year?
Your honor, no, I don't feel that we are at this time.
Thank you.
Yeah, and didn't I see a report that said that Denver Air Connections, the revenue is $100,000 a week, in excess of $100,000 a week now? So that looks pretty good for the future, if that stays up, okay?
Your honor?
Go ahead.
So if the revenue's $100,000 a month?
A week.
A week?
A week.
A week?
A week. What are our supports to that, and will ours?
Well, as the revenue goes up, the demand for the Minimum Revenue Guarantee goes down.
Yippee skippy.
Okay, at some point in time, at some point in time, then we're breaking even. Okay?
They might maybe afford a hospital.
Wow. Okay, see, so we've talked about that a little bit inside, but we don't know how to do a Minimum Revenue Guarantee for the hospital.
We'll figure that one out.
Okay, you work on that. Okay, any other discussion on the MOU with the county and city of Lander? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mayor votes yes. Okay, consideration of NeoGov software contracts. City administrators, report please.
Thank you, your honor. Mayor and council, during the planning process for the goals of this year, there were a number of items looked into with regard to goals. Goal number one discusses obtaining compatible IT solutions for the city, and goal number six deals with optimization of city operations. As such, staff began looking into some of those denoted IT programs, and what you have before you is the HR package that staff has identified and is presenting to council for your consideration. Currently, the entire HR process, from our advertising to all of the processing, is handled almost completely by Kristin Watson, which means that every application that comes in is handled by hand. Every time, we have to put something together for a packet with hiring that's copied and then given out in paper form. What we're proposing for you with this new process is not just to replace that portion of the process, but also the recruitment, the recruitment process, the onboarding process, the training process, the evaluation process, which is all held within the current, the proposed NeoGov software. So what this process would do is allow us to go to a completely IT-based hiring process. It would allow us to advertise through GovJobs, which is the largest government website, if that's included, and would also make sure that individuals would fill out those forms online as opposed to presenting paper copies. Those applications could be managed. For instance, if a particular job has 20 applicants and the job requires a CDL, and six of them do not have a CDL and denote as such, those would be automatically removed and be given notice of that removal. That wouldn't have to be done by a person, that would be done with a click. Those similar activities include moving that process on to the department heads during the selection process to the managers. Once an individual is selected, there would be an onboarding process that is usually conducted by Ms. Watson that would allow for individuals to conduct the onboarding process largely before they ever walk in the room and have access to that information on an ongoing basis. So it would eat up a significant amount less staff time. Ongoing evaluations are another module which allows staff greater detail in putting together evaluations, setting goals, providing for ongoing training, and does, it does in fact provide a training database that we can use as part of this. All of these different items allow, are also cloud-based, so we would not be maintaining servers and the data on-site. This would be a service that actually maintains that data at distance. What that means for most of us is if, instead of maintaining it on the computer, if the computer breaks, the building burns, what have you, all we have to do is log back in on another computer and we're up and running again. The first year's cost for this item is $22,994 with ongoing cost of $18,994. The contract has been reviewed by legal, two items were changed, and you have the new copy that has been approved. The implementation, if approved, for this is between three to six months. I would denote for council's understanding that this is a change to what we have been doing, so there will be more involvement from supervisors in these different processes. However, it also provides tools for supervisors in terms of recruitment and evaluation during the hiring process and on an ongoing basis. As such, we recommend this for, we recommend this to you for your approval, and we would be happy to answer any questions. The last thing I would add is staff did have a chance to go through this, have a demonstration, I believe, and the mayor was present at that time. We would be happy to answer any questions and detail more to you exactly how this can aid in our work. Thank you.
Mike?
Your honor and Tony, I noticed in the estimate, I guess it is, or quote, the number two, the governmentjobs.com, for example, the $1,250 is stricken. Does that mean that we're not getting it, or does that mean they're giving it to us for free?
Your honor, Councilman Bailey, my understanding is that we are continuing to receive that. That is one of the costs that were reduced as part of their offer.
Okay, and then I guess same thing on the item seven, eight, nine, and 10, or seven, eight, nine? Were we getting those where there's, looks like $4,000 in setup and training? Is the setup and training for those other modules included in that, or are we just not doing it yet, or how's that working, I guess?
No, this is going to be proposed as a pack, as a package purchase. So while that's been, while that's been reduced and modified, that's, you're getting everything that we've denoted and everything that is denoted as part of the entire package.
Okay, but then basically we're paying that much per year after that to operate it?
You're paying the $18,994.
Like a subscription type of thing as opposed to a purchase, if you want to call it that?
Correct. While we find that challenging at times in terms of the cost, we do understand that if, from a staff perspective, if we were to take this step, the hiring process to just cover half of it would have been, would have exceeded that, so we see it as a savings. But a lot of these, a lot of these different software packages are going to this type of agreement.
Okay, thank you.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve the contract for the NeoGov software.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Your honor?
Go ahead, Kyle.
Tony, will this replace any present software that we're, or is this in addition to?
Your honor, Councilman, this is in addition to. Other packages, when we've talked about our ERP and the like, have the ability to save some data, but this will be in addition to that, and it will focus completely from the start to essentially the finish of the hiring process.
So this is what you would call an HR package hiring?
Yes, sir.
So we probably could have saved that when we were looking for a city administrator.
It may, it may have helped, your honor.
Yeah, when we went the third time around, or the fourth time around, you know, and we'd already seen 60 applications by that time, then...
If this would have done it all online, they would have just sent him to us.
It would have been done, yeah, uh-huh, yeah. Okay, that's terrific, okay? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, okay. The next item is interviews for the vacant city council seat for Ward Two. We have applicants Carla Borders, David Jost, and Rebecca Schotze. And I think the way we're gonna do this is we'll have the candidates go out into the foyer, and we'll bring you in one at a time so that we can ask, we're gonna ask everybody the same questions, so we don't want to give the later candidates an opportunity to prep their answers, okay? Not that this is a hard test, but we are gonna, we are gonna try to get to know you a little bit and give you some exclusive time with us, so. Is there, did I say it all, Tony? Did I need to?
Yes, your honor.
Okay, so if those three candidates would step out into the foyer, we'll close the door, and then we'll invite you in one at a time, okay? All right, thank you.
You ready?
Yeah, 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 we can, oh, look at that, we've got names in everything.
Megan.
Okay, Carla Borders is first, okay. Hi, Carla.
Hi.
So what we're going to do is each one of us is going to take, ask a question, and we'll ask every candidate the same question, same guy gets the same question. It's kind of like a, well, it's personnel, okay? And so we'll start with Lance Godey.
Hi, Carla.
Hi.
Describe your personal success and how it relates to serving as a council member.
Well, starting out, I was born and raised in Fremont County, attended school at Wind River, went on to become a mom and raised two children. Once they were grown up, I went back to school, and I've utilized CWC for two associate's degrees. I've slowly worked my way up in the employment world, and I'm now the Safety Outreach Coordinator for Injury Prevention Resources. Very rewarding job. I get to work with a lot of law enforcement and other agencies to help make sure that our highways are safe. We try our best to make that happen. I've also served on many different boards. I was on the Business Leadership Network with a couple of the councilmen here. That was very rewarding. I've also been involved with the Fremont County election since 2010. I was just named a head judge this year, so I'm kind of excited about that. Everything that I do, I try to give back. We have the CES Festival of Trees. I've participated in that for, I think this will be my ninth year. I always donate a tree and help plan and everything, and that's very rewarding, too. CES puts a lot of people to work that wouldn't normally get to go to work, and I love that. I love to be able to help supplement that. City council is something I've always thought about doing, and I saw an opportunity and just decided I'd throw my name in and see what happened.
Thank you. Mr. Hancock?
So what do you perceive as some of the key issues facing Riverton, and could you briefly describe how you'd approach those issues through your role on the council if you were appointed?
Well, of course, there's always the fiscal management of the city. We've also got, you know, as the young lady came up in the beginning of the meeting, there were some issues with City Park. I'm also serving on the City Parks Committee right now, so we're trying to go through each park with a fine-tooth comb and see what the issues are and how we can resolve those. You know, a lot of the things, I'll be honest, I'm not real aware of what some of the issues are, but I'm willing to do whatever I can to help and be a voice for the people and work in the best interest of the city.
Thank you.
Okay. Mike Bailey?
Hi, Carla.
Hi.
So what unique characteristics would you bring to the council if you were chosen?
I think probably one of the best things is I'm a very positive person, and I like to think outside the box. So I'm very creative, and, you know, maybe if, you know, there's something that we're stuck on, sometimes I have the ability to come up with a solution just because I am creative and I do think outside the box.
Thank you.
Kyle?
You remind me of Holly. From your past experience, what do you believe has best prepared you for this office?
Well, we'll start back in high school when I was in FFA, and that helped me become very familiar with parliamentary procedure and just kind of the way things operate. And then just different positions that I've held over the years. I've been, I've held offices in softball association and different organizations like that, baseball, and so I think that just helped kind of mold me into, you know...
Are you afraid to be unpolitically correct?
Am I afraid to be unpolitically correct?
Speak your mind.
No, not at all. Not at all.
So what role in the community do you think city government should fill?
Well, of course, determining policy, enforcing policy, making sure that the citizens have what they need, taking care of them, making sure that the city functions at the correct level, and they're fiscally responsible, and just making sure that it all cycles appropriately.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Sean.
Oh, Sean, are you there?
I am. Good evening, Carla. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
My question is, the filing date ended on June 1st. So my question to you is, why did you not file to be selected by the people, and why the opportunity has come up now? So I just want to know why you didn't think about filing during the election period?
Well, to be completely honest, it wasn't on my radar at the time. Once I realized that Holly was leaving, I saw an opportunity, and it kind of gave me a kick in the pants to actually do something. So it wasn't that I was reluctant to do that, and I have seriously given thought to actually campaigning. It's just not something I really considered doing yet. So when this came up, I jumped on the opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Sean. Okay, Carla, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let you step out, and who's next?
David. David.
Jost. David Jost. David, have David come in, okay? David?
How are you?
We're good. Glad to have you here this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we've each got a question to ask, and so we'll start with Lance Godey.
Welcome. Describe your personal success and how it relates to serving as a council member.
Can you guys hear me okay on this? I know I'm over standard height. You know, when I talk about my success and how it relates to government, I think back to the choice I made not to go to medical school. I was shadowing with Dr. Ghost, and he said that the power of policy was amazing. This was when the Affordable Care Act came out, and I made the choice to skip medical school and get into politics and policy. And I'm very blessed, I'm very happy to have worked for Senator Barasso, to gone to the Society of American Foresters, have been a policy intern for them, and now to run a statewide campaign for Taylor Haynes. All of those experiences have the common tie of talking with constituents, and that's something that I've learned and can't be overlooked. You always have to listen to constituents. You always have to deliver the clear, concise message of what they're saying and make sure that it's heard where it needs to be heard. So overall, even though my roles have grown, and I'm very blessed to have those roles, I think the ability to listen and communicate concisely and clearly is an asset that will do well here and in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hancock?
What do you perceive as some of the key issues facing Riverton, and could you describe how you would approach these issues through your role on the council if you were appointed?
Well, some of the key issues you guys, well, that we're all facing in Riverton right now, a lot of people are talking about the hospital, as Kyle and Mayor were talking about. I know a lot of people are concerned about that. I'm not sure at this point how I would address that. I haven't looked into that. My role, I think, if I am taken by the council, is to learn first and to see the way that you guys are going with the master plan. I looked at the master plan and included it in my letter, and I think you guys have made great strides. And I think within that plan, excuse me, and within what you guys are doing is a way for Riverton to succeed, to improve the services of the hospital and other health care. Another challenge that I'm really looking forward to is the airfare. And with Key Lime, I've worked quite a bit with Taylor Haynes and also with SV40 coming up, and what they're going to do to try to expand rural air service. And I actually have some experience there, and Taylor was dead set against it when we started this election. I remember we came and talked to you, Mike and Mayor, and he told you he was absolutely against it. And we were actually able to persuade him that there are some good parts to SV40, and there are some ways for communities like Riverton, who has spent a great deal on our airport, to further our goal of getting rural air traffic in here and getting more bodies and servicing not only Riverton but Lander with Knowles and everything else. So I look forward to taking a look at SV40 and moving forward there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Dave, good evening.
How are you, sir?
Good. So what unique characteristics would you bring to the council if you were appointed?
Does height count, or is... I mean, if we field a basketball team, otherwise I'm out. I think my experience in local, I've had experience in local policy and politics, and also I've had a great deal of education in policy, economics, finance. I'm at the University of Northwestern University, excuse me, right now, where I'm getting a master's in public policy and public administration. And a lot of that overlays directly with what's going on here, with what's the software that you can use, how are cities managing things better, how's everyone getting it done, especially in a time of recession, is something I've learned a lot about. So I would look to my education, and I would say I'm rather impressed with the budget. In all the sample budgets I've gotten in school, not one of them ever had excess. They were always like, here's our downfall, and what would you do with it? So that's extremely impressive. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Kyle?
From your past experience, what do you believe has best prepared you for this office?
If I drilled it down to one thing, you know, I talked about the power of policy and leaving, not going to med school. But there was a class I took when I got my master's in neuroscience where I had to stand up in front of every professor, biology, neuroscience, all the students. So we had a room full of 60 people, and I had to take someone else's research and stand up there and talk for an hour about what they did right and what they did wrong and what I would do next. And it's extremely difficult to do that, especially as a new person who doesn't know all the different tests and ways to go about completing neuroscience projects. So through that, I learned to think on my feet and to be able to say the hardest thing of all, I don't know, but I'll get back to you with a good answer on that and keep my word on that. Because they do expect you to, if you say you're going to give them an answer later, they expected it. So I think that experience was great. Also, working for Senator Barasso, I picked up the phone a lot of times, and there's very angry people on the end of that phone who believe that Senator Barasso has done something wrong. I even had people who thought that it should be Senator Barasso answering the phone, and they're very disappointed that it's me and not Senator Barasso. So I had to deal a lot with getting to the root cause and helping someone who may not want help at that time, they just want to gripe, but being able to elicit some sort of dialogue, move forward, and find a solution, at least for now, so that we can move forward and make the constituents happy. So those two things, I would say, are probably the best.
Good, thanks. Sean?
Hey, Dave, appreciate you coming out this evening.
You're not going to ask me about my strike zone, are you, Empire?
No, we've already talked about that in length. The question I have for you is, June 1st is when the primary candidacy filing date closed. So my question is, why did you not put in for candidacy to be elected by the people instead of leaving it to the council?
That's a good question. I didn't think I would be here today, Sean. I had a lot of people step forward and ask me to do this, and I had a couple of friends who were going to run against Lance, and I think they decided Lance was going to beat them, so they decided not to. And I agree with you. I know we talked about this, and the power of election and the people's choice is something that I hold near and dear. It's something I've been fighting for with Taylor recently, as you've seen in the news, is that everybody gets their chance. So for me, it was twofold. One, that a lot of people stepped forward and asked me, and two was that I made some permanent choices about where I would be as far as school and living from here on out, at least in the foreseeable future. I was thinking about going to Northwestern to finish, and I found out that a school I went to to get one of my masters, Virginia Tech, has an amazing doctoral program. You can do almost totally from the internet and via phone and Skype and everything else. And I'm really looking forward to being able to complete my PhD out of school that I love, but stay in the city that I love, too. So that opened up a lot for me. And of course, you know how much I care about umpiring and coaching, and football's coming up. We're really excited about that. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the kids have convinced me that I need to stay here a few more years, too.
Perfect. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. So what roles do you think that the city government should fill?
I think that's the hardest question out of all of them, Mayor.
I think it's tough, you bet.
City government is many things to many different people. So I think that depends on what the problem is, what the constituent's saying, what comes before you, and what kind of financial and other situations you find yourself in. For example, the airport is doing well. We're seeing flights increasing, what do we say, $100,000, is that a week? So we're doing better there. That allows us to address some other problems that we might need to look at, that constituents are concerned about. For example, the hospital. People that have approached me and said, you know, we need to find a way to have blood work done there. And I don't know the answer to that question, but I know that the role, as far as I see it, is to look at what you currently have, your benefits and your cons, and then find a way to address as many problems as you can. Not everybody's going to be happy, but if you're dealing with constituents and stepping forward and trying to give them something, then I believe you're going above and beyond your job as a city government.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. No, I think that's it.
Thank you all for your time.
You bet. Thank you, David, for coming in. Will you have Rebecca Schatzah come in, please?
Good evening, Mayor, gentlemen.
Good evening, Rebecca. We have, each of us get to ask a question, okay? And we've asked the other candidates the same questions. So we'll start with Lance Godey.
Greetings.
Good evening.
Describe your personal success and how it relates to serving as a council member.
My personal success. Good question. I didn't think about answering questions on myself. My personal success, I think, in life is always being willing to give more of myself to the community rather than giving to myself. I find, actually, and I told them something, they're like, well, why would you do that if, why do you do this? Why do you volunteer? I said, because, I don't, it's kind of selfish, actually, because I feel like I'm doing it for myself. I feel like contributing my time and my knowledge to bettering our community and bettering people around me, it makes me feel better about myself. And so as a councilperson, I feel that putting our community members before I put myself will help me make the decisions to improve our community in all aspects that we need improvement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Tim?
So what do you perceive as some of the key issues facing Riverton and briefly describe how you would approach these issues through your role on the council if you were appointed?
Actually, I have three different main challenges that I see that our city has. My first main challenge, I think, would be community involvement. And I think in order, and what I mean by that is getting more people involved in community events, volunteering for certain committees. And to do that, I think if we create more opportunities for individuals, make those opportunities more available by utilizing social media to inform people of what the opportunities are. And not just social media, but our, you know, the council meetings, getting people involved, coming to the council meetings and that type of stuff, just make it, make them, make them see that there are more opportunities to be involved. My second challenge, which was even brought up this evening, is the public intoxication and substance abuse issues. I know that as a city, there's already been things that we've approached in that way by creating a solutions committee, to create solutions to the issue, which I am a part of that committee, and I see a lot of great things happening there. Back to community involvement, I think we could combat the public intoxication, substance abuse by involving the community, which we've done with the skate park and the splash pad. And then with the parks committee, which I'm also a member of, creating things within the parks to get people there because I've always said, since I very first got home in 2015, that the best way and the simplest way anyhow, in my opinion, to rid the community of the public intoxication and substance abuse is to bring good in. And by good, I mean bring people to those locations such as the rails to trails and the city parks because if, I mean, as an intoxicated individual, you don't want to be around a bunch of kids laughing and having a good time. So I honestly do believe that the simplest solution to our issue with public intoxication and substance abuse is to have community involvement. And then another way to combat the public intoxication and substance abuse is to build relationships within the community and outside of the community, specifically with the tribal community, building positive relationships with them, communicating with them and keeping that open line of communication. My third challenge that I believe we have within our city is economic development. And I don't really see it so much as a challenge in the most recent history because I've seen a lot of great things happening. And I do see that we do have a lot of amazing things as far as economic development in our community. For instance, we have the airport, which over the past, gosh, it's been about a year and a half, maybe two years since the airport came, changed anyhow and shifted. I've seen more people utilizing our air service, which brings people into the community to provide for economic development. We have Central Wyoming College, which if you ever toured that campus, I was up there the other day for the balloon launch. I mean, it's such an amazing place. And that's another thing we could, we can maybe utilize within our community and promote is people coming into our community, utilizing our community college. And then also, which I don't have too much knowledge about, so I'm not going to fiddle commission this, but the Eastern Shoshone Business Park. I've been kind of following that as it's coming across and that will also help improve our economic development. So I think just bringing people, giving people a reason to come into our community would combat that challenge.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Mike?
Good evening.
Good evening.
What unique characteristics would you bring to the council if you were appointed?
I'm very enthusiastic. One thing, I was talking about this to my husband yesterday, you know, because I'm trying to prep myself and think of the questions I'd be asked to prepare myself because I do get nervous in these types of situations, that I can look back over the history of my life and it doesn't matter who I've worked for or worked with, whether they agreed with me or disagreed with me. At the end of the day, I cannot think of one single individual that would say, that could say that I did not accomplish the mission that was given to me. There's, and I pride myself in that every day. You know, I could be extremely tired, you know, from waking up at 5:00 AM, going for a run, working all day, and my mind's constantly going while I'm at work, and then getting off work and going to softball practice or going to a meeting or, and doing something else. But at the end of the day, I can lay my head down the pillow knowing that like, at least I accomplished everything that I wanted to accomplish on my list. So I, that's, well, I pride myself. And I suppose it's being a doer and making things happen.
Thank you. Kyle?
Man, I'm just, good afternoon.
Good evening.
From your past experience, what do you believe has been, has best prepared you for this office?
This specific office would be getting to know the people within this community. I know what people are concerned about because I talk to everybody, could ask my husband because he gets on me all the time about it. I want to hear what people, the concerns of the community. So I think that's what's best prepared for this specific position, is just the familiarity I have with the community.
Good evening, Rebecca.
Good evening.
So my question for you is, is June 1st is when the candidate filing date closed for the public election. So my question is, is why did you not run and let the people make the choice instead of putting it into the council selection tonight?
It's a great question. The reason I couldn't run is because my supervisor in my current job told me I could not because it was a conflict of interest as a government employee to run for any office. So when this opened back up again, I had spoke to her again and she had given me the approval to go ahead and do it as long as I signed a waiver stating that I would not allow it to be a conflict of interest. And if there was a conflict of interest, I would be held completely responsible for that.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
So what roles do you think city government should fill?
Service to the public. And ensuring that we have and maintain a successful community in every aspect, whether it's financial or economical or morally. I do believe it is the city council's position to make sure that our city is successful. Thank you.
All right. So you can step out, okay? And then I guess we're going to, are we going to do an exec session here?
Your honor, if you would like, that, that is one of the options, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen.
You bet. Thank you.
Your honor, I would, I would move that we go into executive session.
Second.
And Kyle, okay, so let's see, we need to get a motion. The motion is to consider the appointment employment right to practice dismissal complaints or charges against a public officer, professional person or employee in accordance with Wyoming statute 16-4-405A2 and for the purpose of considering offers, tendering wages, salaries, benefits or terms of employment during negotiations in accordance with Wyoming statute 16-4-405A10. That's the legal, that's the legal terminology. Okay? So we've moved and seconded that we go into executive session. Is there any discussion on that? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sean, we'll give you, hang up and we'll call you back, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. We stand convenient to executive session at 8:12. We'll invite Tony Tolstead. Okay? All right. This shouldn't take but just a couple of minutes, but. Okay. It wouldn't matter who we picked, we would get a great person for the city council. Okay? So we really thank the three of you for offering your services to fill this vacancy. You know, Holly Gibbon did a great job. She really dug in and worked on a lot of things and, and we were excited about that. Sad to see her go. And yet, when you actually look around the table, you know, Lance was appointed, I was appointed to fill a vacancy on the city council, that's how I got in the city council. And, and so about half of the city councilmen are doing that, so. Okay. So the, the vote is we're going to ask Rebecca Schatz to take a position on the city council. So, so that works out pretty good. We hope the rest of you will stay excited about city government and want to be involved in it. And, you know, and there's so many, you know, committees with things going on, with opportunities to participate, you know, we hope you're able to continue to do that. And, and so then I'm going to do the oath of office, right?
Yes, your honor.
Okay. So, so that's, you know, when I came on the city council, I got interviewed just like this, okay? Did the oath of office and the next order of business was to go into executive session in the back room and talk about a big land deal. Okay? And so that is, so you'll, you'll go from there right to there.
All right.
Okay?
Yes, your honor.
Here's a copy for you to read and then we'll sign that together, okay? So raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I not knowingly violated any law.
That I not knowingly violated any law.
Related to my election or appointment.
Related to my election or appointment.
Or caused to be done by others.
Or caused to be done by others.
That I will discharge my, the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Terrific. Thank you. And you can sign it.
I hear it's jumped up every time he does that. Eight?
Yeah, date.
Okay.
What is it?
Seventh?
Seventh.
Thank you.
Okay. So you can walk around there, shake everybody's hand, and then they've already got your name on them.
Just so nobody thinks this is a foregone conclusion, there are three of them.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we are to that interesting point in the, in the meeting, council committee reports and council members roundtable. So Lance, have you got anything for us tonight?
I just did want to mention, we are still actively working the solutions committee. We have a meeting tomorrow with liquor license holders. I've been getting some feedback on a proposed ordinance that's being discussed and we've asked for feedback, asked for a meeting with those liquor license holders and have been getting some feedback and opportunities through this week for them to give us that feedback and then a meeting again, or not again, but a meeting tomorrow in which we'll be able to be face to face through, through those folks. And then we have a meeting on Thursday evening, our regular monthly meeting of the solutions committee. Our hope is, is that we'll have an opportunity to review the input of the liquor license holders and kind of see if we can, where we're at for next week's work session or future meetings. Still not sure exactly the details yet, but more, more coming soon.
Okay.
And I think that's all I have.
Thanks, Lance. Tim?
It is August 7th, and this sounds like obvious, but August 21st is the primary election date. I don't know if people are aware, but many, many, many seats that are open around the state, you're going to be eliminated, almost all of the candidates on the primary election date. So it's the most, probably in the state of Wyoming, the most important time to be making your voices heard. So just encourage everybody to get out and vote, August 21st.
Thank you. Mike?
You'll say we've had a couple of weeks off where we didn't have to meet, but I was very busy and got to participate in some of the rendezvous, you know, the rendezvous committee events. The car, the car show was great up at CBC. And then, of course, we had Fair Week and there was lots of activities and it was really wonderful to see all the people that came out and participated in those events and spectators and, you know, just it brings a lot of people to town. And I, I think it's a great thing for our community that we have these events and the way that we get participation from people. And again, I'd like to thank again the people that put their name in for the candidates to be involved in the city council. Again, we couldn't have made a bad decision and I'm glad, Rebecca, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I just encourage people to get out and get involved because probably one of the most frustrating things that we see is the lack of involvement. We're always looking for people to, to participate in planning commission and airport boards and force committee and, you know, all of these committees that are very vital to us being able to do our job, sometimes they really struggle in getting people involved. And so if you are interested, get out there and get yourself involved. There are so many different aspects of, so just almost any aptitude that you have or passion that you enjoy, there's a committee that is involved in the community that you could help in. And so it's fun to watch the process. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Kyle, you've got anything for us tonight?
Other than been on vacation too long, I talked to Kyle Butterfield last meeting, which seems like over 1,000 years ago, about Fremont Street and how it looked like a construction zone with moats and people were upset about it. And I had a chance to drive on it. And I'm really proud of the job that force committee has done in finishing that and making that look good. You know, I'm in the loan business and, and most people just want to pull their hair out after two weeks with it. And I can imagine that with walking over your driveway and into your house for an extended period of time, but you soon to forget when the nice road is there and everything is working good and, you know, you guys really have done a nice job there. And that one, one cent has done a miraculous job for the city of Riverton because it's enabled us to keep our inner structure up, roads and curbs and gutters, et cetera. And it's just, it's just nice to live in a city that's responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean, have you got anything for us?
I do, your honor. First, I would like to say thank you to Kristin and Mia for all their hard work on the budget. It's reassuring to know that we have good, honest people that are taking care of us and that diligently work to keep that going for us and keeping us out of jail and out of trouble. So thank you to those two and everybody else who helped participate in it. Congratulations to... Congratulations to Rebecca. It's awesome to have you on board, and it shows that persistence does pay off. I never doubted your persistence, and that's one thing that I like about you, and I think that you're gonna be a great asset to the council. I did have an opportunity to meet with the REC 25 board last night. We paid bills, and discussed a couple of the things, there's going to be a pretty neat improvement done to the RJFL field, so we're kind of excited about that coming forward and making that a little bit more modern. I think it's the same building that was there when I played little league baseball back when I was at, so it's definitely due for some upgrades. And then I won't steal Rebecca's under, since it's her first night, but we did meet as a parks committee last night, and there's a lot of ideas rolling around, and I know they're working with the Rotary Club, trying to get some stuff going, so I think we've heard a lot tonight about the parks, and the opportunities that are there to make our parks a little bit better, and it's good to know that we have some good individuals that are really trying to step up in the community to make those a little bit better. So thank you, and that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thanks, Sean. Rebecca?
Yes, Your Honor.
Looks like you got voluntold to talk about the parks committee, huh?
Absolutely, Your Honor.
Okay.
So right now, I am the vice president of the parks committee. I do want to say that the people that we have on that committee are really, really go-getters. I mean, even after the meeting's over, we still talk every day about what we can do next. So just today, I actually had emailed Kyle and Megan with questions in regards to that, because what we are trying to do is bring more organizations within the parks to bring people into the parks, such as the farmer's market. So I didn't contact them, but I haven't heard anything back from them, to see if we can start getting those types of things brought back into the city park, which will of course come to the city council before we make any decisions. I just wanted to make that available to them. We're also, what we're doing with the parks committee is each meeting, and we're doing them every two weeks as of now, because we were, you know, said, hey, faster you guys get this done, the faster you guys can disassemble, but we want to make progress. So what we do is every two weeks, we meet up at a different city park in town, and we just do a walkthrough. So we've gone to City Park so far, and Sunset Park. Next week, or two weeks from now, we'll go to Ryan Park and Monroe Park, and then hopefully Teeter Park if time permits. And we're just walking through, making notes of what improvements we can make, and what ideas we have. But again, I wanted to say how exciting it is to work with that group of individuals, because they are really go-getters, really neat. So I just want to say thank you to all of you for giving me this opportunity. I really, I look forward to it. I am more than excited to get going on this. I know, you know what's funny? Everyone laughs at me like that, because I did the same thing when I was in the military. I was a private PFC, and I was meritfully promoted to every single rank that I had, but they said, oh, she'll get over it. Give her four years, she won't be as motivated, and I never, ever lost my motivation, so I don't intend to listen now, even when, you know, it is funny, but I am motivated. I want to get things done. And thank you to the community as well for allowing me this opportunity to serve as well. So that's all that I have.
Thank you. We're glad to have you on the council, okay?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yeah, and you've inherited a seat with the air conditioner, okay?
I'll bring a coat.
Okay, and in the wintertime, it's the heater.
Oh, good.
So you'll shed clothes, okay?
Right.
All right, so the next item of business is the city administrative report. Oh, let's see, there should be one other item. I'll wait until my comments, go ahead.
Very well, thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple items for your information. We are in receipt of some additional funding this year for air service, Wind River Development graciously donated, or helped support air service for $15,000, and $4,000 a month on top of that for this year. We're very appreciative for their support of our air service and the continuing work that's going on. The next item is that the RFP for the master plan is in its initial draft. It's been distributed to you and to some other individuals throughout the community for initial review. Obviously, we're going to be having that discussion and making sure that the scope of work and the like is sufficient and is all set up. I would thank Eric Carr for his good work putting the RFP together. It's a good document. We're looking forward to finalizing it and getting some proposals in to, so we can get those reviewed and approved, and get that process underway. You have before you the annual report. That will be going on our website. I would give a special thanks, not only to the entire staff, but especially to Megan for her outstanding work putting that together. It is, she does a great job on it, and as she did this year, and we really appreciate all the work that she puts into it. We'll look forward to answering any questions as you read and peruse that over the next few days. The, we did have a rodeo meeting this week at the casino with the northern Rappahoe Tribe, sorry, and they put on the rodeo this late spring. It was a success. They did a very good job, it was very well received. They're looking forward to the next year and expanding that event, and we're very happy to be part of that conversation and continue to be. So our police chief, the mayor, and myself all attended that, and we will continue to attend those meetings as they happen, and they were really great about coordinating with us throughout, and we do appreciate that. There is an airport board meeting next Friday, and a force meeting on Monday the 13th, for those who wish to attend. And the last item, I guess I'd throw out, is another air item, and that we're having a fair sale. These go on periodically, we put those online, and we put those out as best we can. We've had a better showing. Megan has been doing a great deal of work with our Facebook page. Again, thank you, Megan. So we would just, that's another way for us to put out to the community how we can better support our air service and the opportunities people have to travel. With that, I have no additional additions, but I'd stand for any questions.
Any questions for Tony? Okay, so the first appointment that I'll make tonight, with the rest of the board's approval, I'd appoint Rebecca to the finance committee, so that the next time we meet, you guys can elect a new chair. And so right now, we've got Lance and Tim on there, okay? And so we put the new person on finance, so that you can start to understand how we spend money. Okay?
Yes, Your Honor.
All right, okay. So that's our, so that's the first thing we'll do with you, and then you've already got a couple of other jobs, right? You're on the solutions committee and?
And parks.
And parks right now, so see, that worked out pretty good. Okay, so that's terrific. And so I just, I just want to, I'll tell you, the challenge that we face right now with a hospital in Riverton is a challenge for our economic development. I really think that having a good functional hospital in Riverton is really important. And every time Kevin Kershiznik comes from Idea Inc. and talks to us, and shows us and talks to us about economic development, the first thing he says is that you want to keep what you got. That's what you want to do, is try to keep what you've got first. And so I kind of think back to the model that we had with air service. And when we first started out with air service, we were really trying to make Great Lakes a better provider. And we offered them some incentives, and we tried to do several things that would make it better, you know? You know, you think, well gee, if they can't pay their pilots enough to attract pilots, maybe we could help supplement pilot salaries, you know, something like that. None of that worked in that particular case, and so finally, it looked like they were on the way out. It was interesting when we started to actually promote air service, okay? And because we've got state funding for that, we couldn't advertise for Denver Air Connections, you remember that? We had to advertise Fly Riverton. And when we did that, we doubled the sales for Denver Air Connection. I mean, for Great Lakes, okay? So we helped Great Lakes more than we helped Denver Air Connections with that advertising program. I just, I think about our current hospital here, that if we had, now we know that there are problems there, but if we emphasize the good things about that, and try to strengthen what we have, then I think there's a chance that we can build the hospital and make it better and more functional for the city of Riverton. I know that there's all kinds of concerns in our community, and part of the problem is, is that there's story after story after story, which is only half the story. And so it's important for us to think about all of that. It's just, I wish we could get, I wish we could get a full picture and a full understanding of everything that goes on there, and how that, we try to make that work. But I can, my sense is, my sense is, that if the only thing we talk about in the public is the negative side, then we will gradually see that hospital get less and less and less effective. And then we may lose it completely. I don't know what the future holds for that. But it's going to be a real struggle in order to keep that together. And we joked earlier today about the MRG has worked for air service enhancement, you know? So what could we do with a hospital? You know, that's the reason why we had a question tonight. Okay, what is the role of the city? Okay, I think we can, I think we can make a, I think we can make a declaration that air service is a city utility, just like a street, or an alley, or a sewer line, or water line. Okay? I think a hospital is an important part of any community, okay? Can we, can we stretch ourselves to do that? Or are we going to say, no, that's completely outside of our bailiwick? And yet, at the same time, we find ourselves in a very interesting situation, in the fact that this is the only for-profit hospital in the state of Wyoming. Riverton Lander Hospitals are the only for-profit hospitals. The rest are all owned by county government, or a joint powers board, operated some way by the public. And then they hire some company, a hospital management firm, to actually run the hospital. And is that an option to go to? And so I don't know, you think about that, and what is the budget for the Riverton Hospital? $280 million a year.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
You know, we have worked tirelessly for air service, and previous members used to call me on the phone and tell me the price to fly out of Casper, and how easy it was, and everything else. And I said, yeah, it sure is. You drive over Thursday night, you stay in a motel in Casper, you eat in Casper, you get up early in Casper and drive to the airport, and then you fly out, and then you repeat the same thing, because you can't get back in. That's the same thing we have here at the hospital. You know? I don't want to go to the hospital in Thermopolis. I don't want to go to the one in Casper, because I'm lazy, and I feel that we are deservant of quality service here, and we need to do everything possible, positive, to get that in the right direction.
Yeah, so we're really hopeful that, we're really hopeful that we can, we can work with the hospital in some way to make this a more positive relationship, and, but the real challenge for us is, is that the hospital board isn't like the city council, where people can come and attend the meetings, and offer their comments and their concerns, and they don't get to elect members of the hospital board. And, you know, and unfortunately, because it's a huge corporation, I think a lot of the management decisions are made a long ways away from Riverton. And so it's very difficult for us to affect that process at the local level. And yet goodwill has a lot to do with making things work out. And we had Alan from the hospital here, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and he made a presentation. He made a presentation today at the county commissioners' meeting. He was kind of negatively received, you know? And so I just, I think there's, I think that there's more to do than just say, hey, we don't like what's going on. We need to change that conversation to what is it that we can do that will make this different?
What can we do to help them?
What can we do to help? I think that's the thing that we need to do. And so we're going to work on that, and see if there's any way that the city of Riverton can assist in that process, and see if there's any way we can make that better. But I would, there's just, there's just so much negative comment and rumor right now about what goes on at the hospital. You know, we're worried about, we're worried about blood services. That's the latest thing that we lost. Okay, and what, and what did we lose? Well, okay, so occasionally, the Riverton Hospital had to blood type and cross-match. Okay, so they said, we're not going to do that in Riverton anymore until you guys get sharper at it. So here's the hospital, got an interesting challenge, okay? They want to provide excellent care. And maybe they don't have the staff that's up to speed. So what are we going to do? Well, okay, we're not going to do that now for a little bit, until you guys get up to speed. We're all going to go to school. Okay? And get better at it, so that we can provide quality service. Okay, so a few patients who are bleeding profusely wind up being transferred over to Lander, because they can be served quicker there than they can in Riverton, because of that, that blood typing. But then people say, well, you can't get any blood services, and of course, that isn't true, because the hospital still transfuses all kinds of blood, and does all kinds of things here, and they're already set up to do that. Okay? People have the conception that there's no anesthesia available at the Riverton Hospital, but that's not the case, because they do surgery there every day of the week. Okay, see, it's, so what happens is, is that we get little pieces of information that are only partially correct, and then we make a big deal out of that. And then more people say, well gee, I don't trust that anymore, I can't go there. And so then, you know, pretty soon, there's nobody in any bed in the hospital. And that's because a lot of us, a lot of us have got a choice, that if we have any kind of medical services, we get to pick where we're going to go. Thermopolis, or?
Yeah.
Or Casper, Salt Lake, or Denver, you know? There's all kinds of medical services offered all over the country, okay? A lot of specialty places and that type of thing. And maybe we're better off to go there, because that guy is doing 10 of those surgeries a week, and he's got a team that really knows how to do it, and they're very proficient, and they get the job done very quickly. Maybe we're better off to travel. But under some circumstances, staying local would be a really good thing for the city of Riverton. So I just think about the economic development aspect of having a really good hospital in Riverton, and what it is that we can do as a community to try to support the Riverton Hospital, and make it, make it a better place to be here. I think that's something that we really need to work on, and I hope we can, we can be a part of that, okay? I think that's all I have for tonight.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
If I may just a point, I believe the appointment of Councilwoman Schatz onto the finance committee is a voting, is a?
We got a vote on that?
I think it's a vote.
I would entertain a motion. I would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Made it, made it official now. Okay, good. All right, thank you. Uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Then moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.